My children are threatened to be murdered.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, at 10:06, we're going to call this emergency special city council meeting to order. We can start with roll call. Wendy?
Wendy Henley.
Amy?
Amy Patillo.
Buck?
Buck Shapiro.
Gavin?
Gavin Massengill, present.
Sarah?
Sarah Hudson, I'm here.
Okay, we have a full dais and we also have in attendance Charlie Zech, City Attorney, Amber Lewis, City Administrator, Ashley Wayman, City Secretary, and Chief Brady. Okay.
Ms. Mayor, why don't you start off on announcing for the public how to participate.
You bet. Thank you Gavin. So if you're participating on your phone, there is a button down in the bottom right corner. It'll look like three little dots. Yep. Sorry, go ahead.
Better Wendy?
Can you press on your phones and we don't get the feedback?
Sorry, say that again, Amber? Amber?
Amber muted herself. Mute yourself Amber if you want to talk to us.
Yes, please mute yourselves.
Okay. Everybody muted? Good. So first, if you need to speak, well unmute yourself, council, and then for the public, there's a button down in the bottom right corner. If you access that, you'll have a list of options. One of the first options is raise your hand. If you want to speak during public comments, that's the easiest way to do it. Amber Lewis is going to monitor those raised hands as she's the host of the meeting. She'll call, I assume it pings the individual when you call on them Amber. Amber, Ashley, if you guys know any differently there, please take an opportunity to fill in that blank. Okay, not hearing anything. I'll tell you what, I'll open up the meeting with just a few comments myself, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed with where we are. Obviously, the county yesterday issued an ordinance that went into effect last night at 11:59, largely referring to it as a shelter in place. What it does is limit, it's intended to limit people being out and about to, for essential purposes only. There's kind of a list, a fairly sizable list for us to go through here in its entirety as to what qualifies as essential. But in short, and for the purposes of what most of the public will need, grocery shopping is essential. So please go about that in a responsible manner, as well as any pharmacy needs. Far as infrastructure needs, if you have any problems with your home, plumbing services, attorney services, accounting services, those types of things are exempted. I probably advise everybody to go ahead and call ahead to whatever place of business to ensure that they're open. Obvious exceptions, you know, we know that some of our grocery stores, Randalls and HEB and Trader Joe's are observing revised hours. We also have exempted, at the county level, have exempted carryout orders for restaurants. So that's a big overview of the Travis County order. What we're asked to do today, what I'm asking you guys to do today, is to consider extending the emergency health order that the city of Rollingwood issued. I'll let Charlie fill in some blanks there, but essentially, the mayor has the power to put that in place for a term of seven days, which is what we did last week. I believe the seventh day expires today. It can be extended with the help of council. So that's why we've gathered this morning. In the meantime, as far as giving again some overview on the situation generally, we thank Governor Abbott and Comptroller Hager. What they're doing is largely gathering supplies that the state and counties and municipalities can anticipate needing over the next several weeks and potentially months. At the county level, Commissioner Darty and Judge Eckhart and her team have been fantastic in providing us with great level of information. And then locally, discussions with Mayor Adler, his team, Austin Public Health have been really good to work with. So we should say thank you to all those folks. The reason I bring it all up is because the city of Rollingwood is not operating in a bubble. I think it's important for us to understand that we are a part of a greater ecosystem and one that really we all have to pull together to make sure we nip this thing in the bud properly. At a very local level, I want to thank a couple of our residents. I'm not sure if everyone here is aware, but Roseanne Ferraro and Shawthee Jackamore got together a list of some of our more vulnerable citizens and provided that to our police department. And have kind of assembled a nice group of volunteers to help out these vulnerable citizens so that they can have less exposure to a potentially detrimental situation. So I want to thank them, as well as any number of other folks in the city and the greater community that have undertaken, you know, just these thoughtful acts of kindness for our friends and neighbors. Most importantly, our amazing team, Rollingwood, so Amber and the chief have done a phenomenal job of coordinating everybody. Sorry about the background noise, guys. The Public Works Department has done an amazing job making sure our city has stayed up and running. And of course, Carrie and Ashley and Elaine are doing a phenomenal job. Again, just making sure that our day to day continues as close to uninterrupted as it possibly can. Our PD, Police Department, these guys, like many of our first responders out there, are our first line. These guys are probably in harm's way much more often than certainly I wish, and I'm sure most of us wish they would be. But, you know, just make sure you wave to them, say thanks, and know that they're doing absolutely everything they can, you know, to keep us all safe. Let's make sure we do the same for them. Respect the fact that they're out there in harm's way. Make sure that any business that can be conducted over the phone or digitally, let's make sure we continue to go that route. That includes business at City Hall. And then finally, probably the best way to keep safe is again, these hygiene rules, right? Wash your hands, don't touch your face. Be very, very thoughtful about the number of folks you interact with in a given day, right? So I know previously it's been limited to gatherings of no more than 10 folks, but the short answer is, at the end of the day, you want to have come into contact with as few people as you possibly can in a given day. That's really the name of the game and really the point behind the social distancing concept. So that's again, what brings us around to, you know, essential and non-essential business and why ultimately we're asking, we're going to be talking today about whether or not to extend this emergency declaration. After all that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comments. So if there's anybody that's joined us on this call, and now would be a great time to access that hand down in the bottom corner. If you can't figure out how to make that happen, what I'll do is I'll just kind of pause a little bit while Amber grabs these things. If you can't make that happen, shoot somebody a text message or a quick email real quick and we'll see if we can't get that comments in there. If we have any technical difficulties there, I'll be happy to address them after the meeting or as I'm sure my fellow council members would be as well. Amber, if you wouldn't mind, just taking a peek?
Sure, there are no raised hands.
Okay, well I'll tell you what, I'm just going to give it just a little bit longer in case somebody's trying to figure it out.
Leslie Bassman would like to speak?
Sure. I'm going to mute for the time being.
Okay, well Leslie, I think you're unmuted.
She shows muted on my screen, so I may have to unmute myself.
It shows unmuted on mine, though.
We can hear you now.
Can anyone hear me?
We can.
We can hear you Leslie.
Okay. So I am, I'd like to actually address the list that was created for pairing the most vulnerable of the city's residents with those volunteers. How does someone get on that list? What kind of, who do they contact? What qualifications do you have? And what safeguards do you have for those residents, for the volunteers? Because the Lake Travis community did something similar using their churches, and I did that story, and so I'd like to hone in on that to help people.
Sure, no Leslie, I appreciate that. And so what we have undertaken that in an official capacity as the city, this has just been led by a couple of very diligent and thoughtful members of our community. I know from personal experience, it was a lot of, a number of phone calls and emails to folks that the messaging hopefully spread a little virally, which is also why I bring it up now, just in case there are folks in our community that weren't aware of these services. I know messaging was also spread through the Nextdoor social media app. And again, locally, it's just been handled through citizens that have kind of known each other for a number of years, and it branched out from there. I will tell you that what's really going on right now is folks that are being very thoughtful about how they shop for other folks, right? So receiving a kind of a shopping list, if you will, digitally, and then, you know, making sure that you gloves and use gloves and deliver the items to the doorstep rather than having any immediate contact. In a couple of instances, I'm aware that both sanitary, so some bleach wipes have been provided, as well as, you know, unused latex gloves so that the person receiving the items can hopefully handle it safely without risk of exposure. So I don't, just to be clear, I do not believe that this is being handled by medical professionals in general. So I think this is kind of a best practices and folks really just trying to be responsible and be thoughtful about how they're handling the situation. I don't know that it would necessarily equate to a risk-free scenario. I don't know that one of those necessarily exists, to be honest with you. But I do commend the fact that a number of our citizens who are willing to step up and, you know, kind of head out and potentially come into contact with any number of folks so that some of our more designated or vulnerable citizens don't necessarily have to. I hope that, does that help answer your question Leslie?
Yes, but I was actually focusing, that was great, but I was, the bigger part, the big part of this question deals with if someone reads my story and they need help, they're compromised or elderly, is there a website I can point them to?
So there's not necessarily, but the best way to do it, as a really small community that we are, the best way to do it is to contact either City Hall or our PD. I'll tell you, happy to have them contact me. My email address is M Dyson, D Y S O N, at rollingwoodtexas.gov, and I can make sure that their contact information is included. That goes for the volunteers, anybody willing to lend a hand can provide that information as well.
Good, that's what I need, and they'll do things like grocery shopping, I'm assuming, maybe other things that they need.
Right, so, you know, maybe a safe ride over to, you know, a doctor's appointment, some grocery shopping. You know, it's, I know one resident just needed some help with some potential emergency lawn care, right? So those are the types of scenarios. It's basically, I guess the messaging, Leslie, I'd say is, if you need something, there are people here to help. Don't be scared about, you know, asking for a hand. That's ideally what our community is built around.
Perfect, that's all I need, thank you.
Okay, sure. Amber, do we have anybody else for public comments?
No.
Okay. Well guys, if there's anybody else on, this is a really good time to raise your hand. If not, I'm going to move on to the agenda.
Oh, Mayor, there is a raised hand.
Okay.
I think it takes, I think there's a delay in the mute, unmute. This is from Greg Greeson. Okay, he is now unmuted. Go ahead Greg.
Hi Greg.
Greg, are you there? Greg, we have you unmuted. Okay Greg, I'm going to lower your hand, and if you still wish to speak, please raise it again.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone else? Amber?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on from public comments and into the agenda. Discussion and possible action on an ordinance extending a declaration of local disaster in the city of Rollingwood and adopting any rules and regulations deemed necessary to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Rollingwood in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Council, you've been provided two different copies in your packet of, sorry, I keep getting, keep getting text messages, which are clearly very important right now. You've been provided two different copies of declarations, one from Travis County, one from the city of Austin. They are largely impactful, the same, slightly different language in either, they were in both, I guess. But the intent, as I understand it, is largely the same. And speaking of intent, we do have a pending question that Charlie was seeking from the county. I'm not sure Charlie, if you received that answer yet on essential infrastructure.
I haven't gotten response back from that, I was just looking at my text messages. I've got Robin Pats in my office who's reached out to the county to ask to figure out what their intent was with respect to residential and commercial construction. It's not critical in nature and whether or not that's allowed to continue during the order, I haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. Charlie and I had a long discussion on this yesterday evening, and we've got some thoughts, the two of us, but, sorry, Charlie, we're getting a really bad echo, I think, from you. There we go, appreciate it. We had a pretty good discussion about this on kind of what the intent was with the language in the county as far as essential infrastructure. I've also talked with Mayor Adler and gotten some insight from him and how the city of Austin intends to go about it. Tell you what I'm going to do now, I've done a lot of talking and I've got five very intelligent folks that sit on the dais with us. I'm going to open it up for discussion and consideration there, any information that council might need to help make this decision on whether or not extending this declaration is in the best interest of the city. For the record, it is, but obviously you have, you have the opportunity to make that decision, so. This is where you unmute if you want to say anything.
Okay, I raised my hand, I was just waiting to get called on.
Oh, there we go, okay. Play by the rules, well done.
I do have a question. So today in our agenda packet, it looks like we were extending the emergency disaster emergency that you had put into place a week ago. But then now we're talking about the ordinance that was put into effect about Travis County and the city of Austin. Are we covered under Travis County's declaration, or do we have to make our own declaration? And the second part of the question is, what we're doing today with extending the disaster declarations for an additional week, is that separate from what Travis County declaration and city of Austin declaration are?
Can I go ahead and sort of, I think it'd be helpful to have some context of how this whole situation works. So under Government Code 418.108, mayors have the authority to unilaterally declare an emergency declaration of disaster. That section of the government code gives mayors discretion to implement certain restrictions associated with the disaster, and they can do so on their own. It gives them full discretion within the parameters that they're authorized to do under 108. That declaration only lasts for seven days. At that point, the governing body is obligated to, not obligated, but they can either extend it or not extend that disaster declaration. The extension of that disaster declaration continues the disaster declaration for the period of time that you determine to extend it. It also extends any mayor's plenary powers under 418.108 as well. So anytime the disaster declaration is in place, the mayor has the plenary power to act independently to meet any fluid situation within, again, the parameters of 408. And basically, that power, those powers are to, you know, control ingress and egress from the disaster area and control movement of person in the occupancy of premises in that area. That's pretty much the parameters under which America can operate without discretion, so long as this declaration is in place or extended by the city. The county also, judge also has those powers. Any differences between the county's declarations, the mayor or the county judge's declarations and the mayor's declarations, the more restrictive will apply, and so we can only go more restrictive. We can't loosen the restrictions that a county puts in because the county's regulations are applicable to the jurisdictions within the county, not just the unincorporated areas. So, and the city's local law enforcement has the authority to enforce the county's judge's declarations. And so as it currently exists, the, our local law enforcement has authority to enforce the county's declarations, even if the city does nothing. If you extend this, two things in my mind are important about the extension of this if you extend it. One, in my mind, it's a belt and suspenders approach to ensure that if you have any expenses that you'd like to get reimbursed that are associated with the local disaster, the local, the government code or the health and safety code, I can't remember which one, it's not, it's the Texas administrative code. It states that each local jurisdiction has to declare a local disaster in order to qualify for funding. I've interpreted that to mean that the city has to do so on its own. I've heard different arguments from different people that the counties is sufficient. I haven't been able to find anything to verify that, so I'm recommending to my clients that they go ahead and do it, even if you don't even implement any rules, all you do is just extend the disaster. The other then, of course, is, the other part of it is that the mayor's discretionary authority would exist under 408, 418.108, allowing him to act with respect to the fluidity of what's going on, lessen restrictions, increase restrictions on a local, on a local level. I think that's the context under which I, that I think you need to sort of help make you these decisions. I do have a question for the mayor, though. I had provided an amended declaration of disaster that incorporated all of the county's language into our declaration. Did you actually execute that or not?
We did not execute it, yes.
All right, okay. Well, if that's something you want to do, you should do that before council takes its action because then council would be extending whatever you did, because right now, all they would be doing is extending what you previously did.
Got it. I appreciate the heads up. So how do we go about executing that now?
As far as I'm concerned, you can just sign it, we can file it with the city secretary, and that's good for me if you, that's something you declare that you want to do. It's within your discretion, you're still within the seven days. The other thing we could do without you declaring that is, is that the city council could extend the current declaration and include those regulations in their extension, and that also would be sufficient.
Perfect, that's actually the process that I thought we were going to undertake.
Okay, I just want to make sure all the options are on the table and everybody understands the context and the parameters and what the law says and the options they're under.
Right. So council, what ultimately I'm asking you to consider today is extending the emergency declaration for the city as amended to incorporate the new aspects from the county's declaration that was issued yesterday and went into effect last night at 11:59 PM. Wendy, does that help answer your question?
It does, I think we just lost Gavin.
Yes Gavin?
We did.
I'm still here.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I know we're still seeking clarification on the essential personnel question and for building, but I have had questions, I'm sure someone will be familiar about that. And my thought on that is that if projects are at a point where it's going to pose any health or safety risk, that to me would be essential to make sure that those projects are able to get buttoned up and not left in a state that could be a health or safety issue whatsoever.
Sure, so I appreciate Sure. So I appreciate, sorry, getting a lot of feedback, but I appreciate the thought, Wendy. It's important for us to bring back what, a point, probably the most important point that Charlie made, is that we can enforce stricter rules or implement stricter regulation than the county. But at a bare minimum, we have to enforce what the county has declared. So that's why we're seeking clarification on what essential is. It is possible that the county's intent was for all commercial and residential to button up immediately at 11:59. That's kind of the, and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the impetus of the clarification that we're seeking.
Yeah, that's correct. I've got, obviously, several cities in Travis County, and they all have the same question with respect to day-to-day, normal residential or commercial construction that does not affect critical infrastructure. The, I want to make sure everybody knows and understands that you still have your, even though we want to, we obviously want to know what the county's intent was so that we are enforcing what they intended to put in place. But just like any situation where you have an enforcement issue, code compliance, state speed limits, things of that nature, local law enforcement officers have discretion with respect to how they handle these local enforcement issues. And it's my understanding that city staff, along with the mayor, will be looking at things that you had mentioned, Councilmember Hunley, with respect to, hey, maybe it's regular, regular construction, but there is a health and public safety issue associated with trying to get that particular piece of it accomplished. You should have, you have that local discretion to handle those types of enforcement issues on a case-by-case basis.
Right. Thank you, Charlie. Want to, just for additional clarity, the conversations that I've had with both Carrie and Amber, we're suggesting, let's go ahead and get a formal notice out to the contractors in the city. Let them know. And then let them know that, more likely than not, we are going to have to button this up, at least for a couple of weeks. And, you know, try to, try to get whatever processes they're undertaking, whatever they need to get done, get done by Friday, close business, to safeguard against these, you know, any kind of damage, potential damage to the property or health and safety items that you noted, Wendy. Obviously, there'll be some discretionary. Pointed out. And, you know, it's, another thing I'd like us all to bear in mind is that... Sorry, I just froze up, huh? Everybody, can anybody hear me? Everybody hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. I don't know if I have, if I'm on video. But one of the things that I want us to bear in mind is that we have to send city staff and inspectors and, you know, have city personnel that monitored these situations. We had an event just yesterday, which I'm sure was unintentional. It's accidental. We're all very aware that, as with construction, you know, potential accidents will happen. And in this instance, a water line was ruptured. Our public works team was fantastic with their response. They got to it immediately and water was restored within, well, within the hour. But we now have 13 households that are, you know, under a shelter-in-place declaration from the county and from the city, well, eventually from the city. And, you know, they're also under a boil water notice. So it's just kind of one of these things where we're trying to figure out how best to balance out the health and safety of the greater community. I hope that that context is helpful to everybody.
And my, the only question that I've had from any residents has been the question about the construction and also yard services.
Right. So Amber, I heard you note earlier with regards to lawn services that lawn services are exempted. Is that just at the city level or is that residential? Or Charlie, if you know the answer to that?
My interpretation is that routine landscaping and lawn care contributes to the public health and welfare and safety of the community. And so that is permitted to continue. Is that correct, Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, I don't know the answers to some of these questions because, again, as I told you guys, y'all on the phone last night. You know, I didn't help draft this order. I was not involved in the discussions with respect to what they were trying to accomplish. I tend to be a little more conservative with respect to these issues. You know, I would say routine lawn care that is necessary to the health and safety of the community is appropriate. But, you know, having someone come in and cut your grass and trim your bushes, just because you want your lawn to look pretty is probably not exempted. In other words, if your lawn gets to the point where, okay, we're, this is a hazard because of rodents and things of that nature, yeah, come in and do that. But otherwise, you know, we want to keep our lawn that look nice. It's probably not an exemption under the definitions as I read the order. But again, I'm not the one enforcing it. Y'all are, and I'm not the county. And it's probably best to direct those questions to the county. And also keeping in mind, as I've told all my clients, the intent of this order is to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and sort of doing a balance of, you know, is it a, which is the greater risk associated with the action being taken? The spread of COVID or the health and safety of not completing the activity? That's probably the best way to look at it.
Yeah, I agree, guys. And just, you know, I'm sure probably all of us at this point have taken a really good look at some of the forecasted numbers out there. And I probably don't need to underscore to anybody the level of seriousness that we're all facing. If you need evidence of that, I think a really easy thing to consider is just, you know, Austin doesn't shut down a $355 million revenue generator, you know, on a whim, right? Entire countries with tens of millions of people don't go on lockdown on a whim. We are staring down the barrel of a health crisis here. And everybody needs to pull together to do the absolute best we can do. You know, flatten the curve has become a really trendy thing to say. But in truth, that's what we, that's the best, that's the best thing that we can do right now. The worst thing that we can do is help contribute to, you know, the greater Austin areas over capacity in their healthcare system. That doesn't do any of us any good. So, you know, obviously, it's a balancing act, as Charlie put out. But I would hope that the balance is almost exclusively, if not exclusively, in favor of the preservation of life, health, and safety of community members.
Okay, so Charlie, if we extend the current declaration that the mayor has issued, that would still carry with it the provisions that the county has already adopted. But, and then that would give him maximum flexibility to go more strict than what the county has adopted, right? Can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. I know how I want to vote. I would say we just extend the declaration that he's already done. It still gives, we still fall under the county's jurisdiction. And then he can extend from that if needed.
If I could, if I could once again just ask you guys to consider extending the declaration as amended to incorporate the changes put forward by the county yesterday.
But that's my point, Mayor. You don't need to do that.
Okay.
Because you've already gotten that. And so if you, in your interpretation...
Yeah, so let me, let me sort of expand on the point that Gavin's clearly making here. If all you do is extend the current declaration, we're all already under Travis County's regulations. And then, Mayor, I believe it's important that those same regulations be implemented locally. Then you can do that because of the extension of this declaration.
I appreciate it. Now, I understand the point that's being made. What I was under the impression of, Charlie, is that for a belt and suspenders type approach, that our declaration should as closely mirror the county's as possible if we're trying to make claims or if anybody in the community needs to make claims.
The only, so the belt and suspenders approach is just making sure we declare the declaration. Regardless of whether or not you put in rules or regulations in is not relevant to making sure we have the ability to get reimbursed. It's just having the declaration in place.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the clarification.
Mayor?
Thanks, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Go for it, Amy.
Thanks. No, I don't want to get into the weeds on any particular issue, but I do think the construction issue is probably the one that I've gotten the most questions about as well. And I appreciate that there's a discussion now about trying to make sure we give some clarification potentially to builders, some type of notice. I do think, because when I looked, when I read the order and then watched the press conference, it's unclear to me why it was left so ambiguous from the county on that issue because I think that that's an area where we have a lot of people who have a lot of money at stake, and we want to make sure that there's some clarification. What I've been thinking about is, as a community, we are possibly unique when compared with other areas of the county. I'm not sure, just based on the number of actual construction projects we have going on. And so I think that it probably is going to be a big question. But I think we're also unique in the fact that we spend a lot of time as, like in the Planning and Zoning Commission and at our council level, actually talking about construction-related issues. Like, can you come in on Saturday and work on a house? And what can you do on Saturday that doesn't disturb things? So my hope is that we can continue to have a really good health and safety perspective conversation on that and whatever is provided to the contractors in our area. And my hope also is that we'll have contractors who are willing to be respectful and not try to push the button to try to see how far they can go. So I'm hopeful that as a community, we can come together in that area and make sure that we don't have a bunch of shell projects that are left exposed that maybe don't have a roof and so they're going to get damaged or don't have other electrical things that need to get put in in order to be able to put safety like an alarm system in them. So I'm just, I'm just hopeful to see that be something that hopefully, as a community, we can be thoughtful and that also the contractors in our community work with us so that we can, we can all work on it together and have a really good public safety-focused application of what seems to be really ambiguous.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a great point, Amy. Just so that council's aware, the way this kind of plays in my head, again, is to let all of our contractors in the city know that, you know, more likely than not, it seems anyway, that the intent of the order was to put some kind of limitations on construction. We're going to, we're waiting for additional clarification. The idea for us right now is to, hopefully, current projects can get to a point where general construction and general operations are wrapping up on Friday. And then on a case-by-case basis, the contractors can contact the city to explain the potential of whatever situation they're in. And then we can make that determination. Because obviously, you know, we want to preserve all kinds of loss. You know, certainly the economic loss and it's not, they shouldn't be lost on any of us. I guess that some of these projects are very close to completion within the next week or two, kind of situation. So we could, you know, shutting it down for a few weeks actually exacerbate problems for a few of our citizens unnecessarily. So those are, those are considerations that I've talked to staff about and, you know, we'll have to make on a case-by-case basis, I think.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Councilmember Small Hudson, how's her hand up?
So I was wondering if there was any way that we can put a restriction on excavation at this time because that would be mostly things that are newly kicking off. And if we are trying to prevent... Hello? If we're, if we're trying to prevent any additional water line breaks, restricting the excavation might help keep that to a minimum.
So Sarah, I think that's a, that's a great point. And I would argue that it falls under construction generally. So I don't know that excavation work would be essential in any number of situations. That said, you know, if a contractor does believe that their excavation work is essential, if there's, you know, putting a blanket prohibition on that generally could be problematic if anybody had a water line break or some other issue that needed immediate attention. That said, I don't think that, you know, essential work is kicking off a brand-new construction project. I think that would be kind of an uphill battle to talk about. And again, I just want to clarify that this isn't, this isn't forever, right? What I'm hoping for here is that we're able to reassess the situation after the next couple of weeks. And so the conversation with the contractors is, look, guys, it's beyond inconvenient for everybody, right? It's frustrating for any number of folks, all of us. And the point is, we're all in it together. Consider it just two weeks' worth of bad weather. And we'll try to readdress the situation, reassess, once we have more information. But to your point specifically, Sarah, you know, a blanket prohibition on excavation is tough. I would, I would argue that instead, we weigh it on a case-by-case basis with the understanding that I can't imagine anybody kicking off a, breaking ground on a new project, I guess. Does that help with your questions, Sarah?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little more cynical in what people think is essential when there are no good guidelines because, to the point somebody made about them trying to push the limits, I think we have to be conscious of that as well.
Sure. No, I can, I can appreciate that. And one of the things that I can assure you of is Carrie is in constant contact with the contractors in our community, as Amber is frequently and as I've become certainly recently. No, I, the messaging coming out of, at the city hall and to the contractors is, you know, this is not, it's not a smart time to push it. Again, what we're doing is, this is an elective, right? Nobody wants, nobody wants to be in this situation. None of us do. Nobody wants, nobody wants to be in this situation. None of us do. Uh, but it requires all of us, uh, doing the right thing. And, um, you know, if we have to, uh, empower our, uh, our PD, uh, the county already has done that, uh, actually, uh, to enforce these things. Hopefully we don't have to. Uh, hopefully people are, are just doing the right thing. But if they're not, uh, that's what these declarations, uh, provide for is, is a level of, of enforcement. And we'll do, uh, what Rollingwood has typically done. You know, here's a, here's a warning, please don't do it. Uh, you've been, you know, here's your clarification. And then if the actions continue, uh, I know the chief, uh, and our officers don't shy away, uh, from, uh, from enforcement. So, um, certainly I appreciate the, uh, the cynical attitude. We've had a couple of bad apples. That said, I do believe that most of the operators and the contractors in our, in our community, um, don't, don't necessarily fit that bill, right? So, um, I think we can probably manage the situation.
Mayor, Councilmember Buck Shapero has his hand raised.
Okay, Buck.
So what exactly is your suggestion?
Yeah, my suggestion, um, my suggestion is that, uh, we let contractors know that, um, when this is absent, uh, additional clarification from the county, uh, that, uh, contractors know that non-essential, uh, construction, which is going to be, I would assume, most of our, uh, residential and commercial construction, um, is, uh, prohibited at the, potentially prohibited at the county level, right? And, and again, uh, outside of, of clarification from the county telling us otherwise, uh, I think the presumption has to be for us to err on the side of caution. So I would recommend that we tell contractors, uh, today, let, let them know that please wrap up, uh, your essential business now to preserve the integrity and the, uh, uh, the quality of, of, of the work that you've done. Button up your project, uh, by end of, uh, business on Friday. And then if there are special circumstances, uh, please contact city hall as to what those special circumstances are. We'll have, we're a small enough community despite the fact that we have, you know, the better part of 80, uh, active permits right now. Uh, we're a small enough community, uh, and, and hands-on enough at, at city hall to have an honest conversation, uh, with each one of these folks, uh, to determine, uh, whether whatever, uh, request it is, um, is, is, is essential, uh, to preserving, uh, health, safety and, and ultimately the, uh, the investments of, of folks. Does that help, Buck?
All right. Yeah, no, that helped clarify where you stand on it. But I mean, if you read the Travis County order, it says including but not limited to the following. So it definitely doesn't exclude residential construction. Uh, I'm more in the line of limiting excavation on a case by case basis and maybe allowing one trade on each site with, uh, a couple of, you know, two or three of their actual workers as opposed to shutting everything down. Because I think the economic ripple effect of this is going to be something unprecedented in our time personally. And I think it allows people that live paycheck to paycheck to keep working and make money and pay their bills. And I, I think the risk at that point is very minimal. If you limit the number of trades to one and you limit the number of that trade of, of how many actual folks they can have there.
Yeah. Uh, Buck philosophically, I don't disagree with you, uh, actually. I mean, it's, it's, uh, uh, you know, up until, uh, I, I reviewed additional numbers, uh, yesterday. I was, I was on the same page, uh, as you and, and, and thought that, you know, if we could limit it to a single trade, having, you know, maybe no more than three folks, uh, on there, uh, on the site. Uh, and looking at it from that perspective, um, you know, it was, yeah, I, I, I didn't disagree. And then we had a water line rupture and then we had, uh, uh, it was, it was pointed out to me rightly that, uh, we're going to be asking, uh, people, um, in our, uh, in our city to go out, uh, and inspect these. Uh, so our folks in our city hall and, and, uh, we're going to ask that our PD, uh, have to, uh, go out and, and make sure that it's only a single trade. Uh, we're going to have to, uh, ask that folks that contract with the city to also, um, uh, be comfortable with going out and inspecting these properties and making sure the work is being done properly. Uh, and the, the more I thought about those aspects, the more it dawned on me that I don't know how, I don't know how that we could effectively, uh, enforce that, uh, and, and, and effectively ensure that, uh, folks are doing what they need to do.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I just don't agree.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate it. I, I, yeah, you know, you and I had this discussion, uh, on, on previous occasion. Um, you know, a lot of these guys, they get paid on a Friday and if they don't get paid on a Friday, they don't eat on Saturday. And I don't know how we, I don't know how we address that. That is a, is a serious, uh, it's going to be a serious issue for, for the greater community unquestionably. You know, I, I, again, I, I go back to.
I just want to make sure everybody understands, y'all can enforce this however you, however you decide. But because this is a county declaration, um, if a citizen were to, you know, request the county to come in to enforce this, there's nothing you could do to prevent the county from shutting down what they think should be shut down. Cause it's not a local regulations. It's a, it's a county jurisdictional regulation. So if the county sheriff came in and said, um, it's our interpretation or we've gotten direction that the work that you're doing can't be done, then the county can do that, just so y'all know.
Is that helpful, Buck, too?
Yeah. So we basically have to wait until the county gives us the clarification on where they stand on this. Cause it might, we might be discussing and arguing about something that's totally a moot point anyways.
That is exact, that is exactly correct.
Yep. They did that for a reason though, let's be honest.
And if you, if you look at Travis County, I think if you look, or sorry, if you look at Travis County versus the city of Austin, uh, that's, that's probably the single biggest, uh, difference, uh, that I would, that I would, uh, well, jump down to me, I guess. Um, we did have a question, uh, from, uh, the public. Sorry, it's, uh, Rhett Bennett. Um, Rhett Bennett was asking, uh, you know, what if any substantive differences existed between, um, Travis and, and city of Austin's declarations? And the short answer there, uh, Rhett, and I apologize, uh, but, um, I didn't, I wasn't part of drafting, uh, any of those and, and I don't believe anybody, uh, on this panel, uh, or in the city council or in, in, in the city, uh, was. And so I'd be a little, uh, little reticent in addressing, uh, specific differences. I wouldn't want to presume, um, uh, you know, to give you inaccurate information there. Me personally, the, the biggest thing I think is a level of clarification, uh, uh, as to what essential, uh, construction projects are, uh, in the city of Austin. It seems a little, seems pretty clear to me. All right, counsel. Uh, what other, what other, uh, thoughts do you have? All right. Um, Amber, is, are there any additional, uh, questions or, or anything that's popping up?
There are none.
There are none. We've all, we've addressed them all.
We've addressed them all.
The chief would like to speak.
Yes, chief. Please, go ahead. Uh, if you could, uh, get a little closer, that'd be great, although.
I think it's, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Okay. So just to bring you up to speed on where we're at. So we've already received some complaints reference the construction. Uh, we went out to Timberline this morning, like right before this meeting. And there were like, there was four separate crews working on three separate houses, all within just houses of each other. So, you know, if you're looking at the intention of the, the order from the county judge, it had lots of crews that were completely different crews, all walking amongst each other. Uh, so those are things to, to, to consider. And as Councilwoman Hudley had suggested, you know, there needs to be some discretion, I think. But I, my opinion is, is, you know, the, the goal was to keep people from, from gathering in large numbers, to stop the spread of the virus. Uh, we spoke to some of the crews and the ones we spoke to voluntarily shut down. They were at a point where they could. There was one particular crew that was working on a swimming pool. They had, they'd already started and there was exposed rebar. And I think that gets into like the discretion. So, uh, they, they said it would take two hours to complete. I think, you know, we thought at that point that was more danger to leave that exposed than not. So I think going forward is, a lot of it will be, I, I don't know that you can create a framework or a, a, an ordinance that's going to be specific. I think, you know, this is a, the emergency situation and there's going to have to be a lot of discretion case by case to determine, you know, what's appropriate.
Right. Thank you, chief. Counsel, you have, uh, you've had a lot to think about. Um, how do we feel about, uh, extending our emergency order?
I have a motion. Can you hear me?
Yes, how long, how long do we want to extend it for a particular date certain or until rescinded?
I would, I would, uh, I move to extend the, uh, mayor's existing declaration of emergency for 30 days from today.
Second.
Do we need to amend it to? Do we need to amend it?
We have a motion.
The Travis County order as well?
In my opinion, we're already under the Travis County order and by not, by not specifically referencing it, we give him maximum flexibility to go more strict if he needs to. And counsel can disagree with that assessment, but that's the way I see it.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Well, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any additional discussion, counsel?
Charlie, is that your interpretation?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. If no, uh, other discussion, uh, I'm going to ask for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah, sorry.
You might want to.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I'm going to call, call the vote too. Uh, Buck, we'll start with you, please.
Hey, so sorry, one question. The Travis County order goes until April 13th, so we're just extending it past that date?
Yeah, my guess is they extend it themselves and then if we had, I'd rather just extend his, both he, both he. I'll let Charlie speak.
I'll let Charlie speak to that.
Yeah, so, um, uh, your declaration of disaster would go for the 30 days as extended, um, by Gavin. Um, and if, if the Travis County extends their current set of regulations, additional time period, it would, you would be under that. If they don't, then you wouldn't. But the mayor would have the flexibility, if he felt locally it was necessary to do something, he could do so.
All right, but you can revoke it prior to that, correct?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll tell you, if, if, yeah, if something, if the county, yeah, if the county, if the county sees fit to rescind, uh, then we can as well, or we'll have that, we'll have that under consideration as well.
And, and let me make sure, make it perfectly clear. All you're doing is, is declaring a disaster. You're not putting any specific rules or regulations in place. You'll be enforcing what the, what Travis County has done. Um, and it, and it gives the mayor the flexibility, based on any validity of the situation, to place more restrictive measures in place if it comes to that or if Travis County lets theirs expire. The mayor believes that they, that it should be continued in effect for your community, can do so. But the city council always has the authority to call a meeting to make, um, to change those, those decisions.
All right. So is it my vote? Aye or yes?
Amy Patillo? Amy Patillo?
Yes.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sorry, did anybody else get, you broke up for me?
Aye, yes.
Aye, thanks. Uh, Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
All right. Uh, unanimous, uh, vote in favor of, of extending, uh, counsel. I appreciate everyone's time. Um, just in, in closing, uh, or prior to closing, uh, I want to just make one more, uh, point. Uh, per, uh, city ordinance, uh, we needed to establish a municipal disaster emergency services committee. The members of that committee, uh, uh, by ordinance, uh, I, I'm serving as chairperson and municipal disaster coordinator. Uh, city administrator Amber Lewis is, uh, serving as the assistant disaster coordinator. Uh, Josh McKay is serving as one of our community representatives and Tom Farrell is, is serving as one of our community representatives. Uh, we've also established an operational disaster service organization. Uh, again, um, I'm serving as the chairperson and municipal disaster coordinator. Uh, city administrator Amber Lewis is serving as the assistant disaster coordinator. Uh, Josh McKay and Tom Farrell serving as community representatives. Uh, chief of police Jason Brady, uh, city secretary Ashley Wayman is the public information officer. Uh, and, uh, this organization also includes our public, our director of public works, David Brice. I've asked, uh, Amber, uh, prior to this meeting to make sure that, uh, she just sends out that email confirmation. So Amber and Ashley, uh, to make sure that you guys get that information. Just to let you know that, uh, uh, we are in fact, uh, in compliance, uh, with our, uh, city ordinances. The other thing I would note is that the chief, uh, put together a great, um, message that has, uh, subsequently been, uh, put to a separate page on our website. Amber, uh, and/or Ashley, I might ask one of the two of you, uh, if you wouldn't mind, uh, giving a little clarification on that page as I just don't have it pulled up in front of me. Or, uh, the reason I'd ask you guys to, to, to talk about it now is there might be people on here, uh, who won't be, uh, getting, uh, subsequent email from you.
Sure. If you go to our website and just search for disaster, it should pull up the disaster services page. And we've got a, a link to our emergency response plan and disaster services plan. And then also we've got our, um, agreement with Austin Public Health there as well.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, well, everybody, I, uh, this went a little bit longer than, uh, that I anticipated. So I very much appreciate, uh, your time. Um, but are there any other thoughts or questions before, uh, before we close this out? Okay. Uh, in that case, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to thank you, mayor, for all of your work. Um, I know you have been, um, working around the clock on this and there's a lot of work that, um, we, people don't see in our community. And I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for the excellent job you've done. So I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you so much. And our staff members, um, we really have such amazing talented people working for the city who care and who have seen us through this. So really our heartfelt thanks to y'all. Um, we're at work and keeping our community going and, um, we're just so thankful to have the staff and the, um, city that we have. And, um, thank you to everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, it's, I, I, I wish I could take, uh, any level of credit for it, but the truth of the matter is, we've got fantastic people, uh, all around. You know, one of the best things, one of the best things about looking, uh, through, you know, everything from the next door post to the text messages to our emails every day, pretty challenging times for everybody. And, and yet, the, uh, the, the positive messaging that I keep hearing, uh, in, in all these, uh, these communications is, we really have a, a, a great community. So thanks to everybody here, again, I really appreciate everyone's time, uh, and, uh, you know, my door figuratively at this point, not literally, is, is open, uh, should anybody have any questions or comments. Sarah, um, I've somehow, uh, transposed your cell number, uh, and your, uh, home number. Uh, so if you have an opportunity, uh, give me a call, just so that I have, uh, an easier line to get in touch with you, uh, a little more readily. If there's nothing else, council, um, I'll let everybody get back to, uh, the important stuff of the day, including teaching your children, uh, and, um, you know, not hoarding, washing your hands, uh, and, uh, staying, uh, a responsible, uh, six feet away, uh, from everybody else, so... Anybody? Okay, uh, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and, and adjourn this meeting, uh, and again, thank you. Uh, everybody stay safe and, uh, available, uh, a lot of the city resources are available if you need us.
You need a motion to adjourn, or are you good? Move to adjourn.
Second, second.
All right, all in favor of calling it a day?
Aye.
All right, and, and, anybody opposed? No, great.
Nope.
All right, thanks, thanks again, council.